Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Whitehall City Council meeting for August 16th, 2022. If you would all please rise from moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Aug, will you please call roll?
Present.
Elmore, present.
Coniston, present.
Cantor.
Present.
Pack.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
President Potter.
Present. At this time, I would accept a motion for the approval of the August 2nd, 2022 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Pack.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This evening, we have three special presentations, and the first one is the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association President Molly Preacher is with us this evening, and she'll be presenting to Julie Aug for Certified Municipal Clerks Award, so. Ms. Preacher, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Well, thank you, President Potter, Mayor Maggie, and council members and staff for letting me come tonight. I'm very proud and honored to be here, and I first want to thank council and the administration for supporting Julie, my friend and fellow clerk, in her continuing education as a clerk. It is vitally important, and I appreciate any council that is supportive of their clerk, especially mine. My name is Molly Preacher. I am president of the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association and the city clerk for your neighbor, the city of Reynoldsburg. I'm here to recognize and honor my friend and your clerk, Julie Aug, for achieving her certification as a certified municipal clerk. Julie not only serves the city of Whitehall, she serves the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association as a board member and our membership chair. The Certified Municipal Clerks Association Award is adjudicated and sponsored by the International Municipal Clerks Association, known as IIMC moving forward. It is the clerks' professional organization founded in 1947. There are upwards of 9,500 members in the United States, Canada, and many other countries. The IIMC's primary goal is to actively promote and continue in education and professional development of municipal clerks through education programs, certification, publications, networking, annual conferences, and research. IIMC also engages in municipal research, enhances critical professional skill development, excuse me, and fosters a spirit of mutual assistance and good fellowship among municipal clerks around the globe. The Certified Municipal Clerks CMC designation program is designed to enhance job performance of the clerk in both small and large communities. To earn the CMC, a municipal clerk must attend extensive education programs, and the designation also requires pertinent experience in a municipality. The program prepares participants to meet the challenges of a complex role of a municipal clerk for providing quality education in partnership with 47 institutions of higher learning. The program has been in existence since 1970 and has helped thousands of clerks in various municipalities. It is with great pleasure that I stand before you tonight to officially present your clerk, Julie Aug, with her Certified Municipal Clerk designation. After a long and dedicated journey of several years and many hours of seminars, some boring, conferences, and institute sessions, she has reached this pinnacle and achievement that very few clerks are able to accomplish. Out of the 9,500 international institute municipal clerk members, she is one of 3,591 clerks who have earned this certification. In the state of Ohio, she is only the 92nd clerk to receive this CMC designation since 1989. So I know Julie is dedicated to the city of Whitehall and works very hard to do the best job possible for city residents and her council. She has done a great job for you, and I'm honored to be here tonight to present this presentation. Thank you.
Julie, would you like to make any comments?
Get your family up, take a picture. I'll record them. All right.
Do you have daughters? Have you daughters?
Yes.
President Potter, would you like to join us?
Sure.
Mayor Meyer. You will be on the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association Facebook page. And I already know Julie is working on her master municipal clerk certification, so you all have a wonderful evening.
You as well.
Thank you, Molly.
Our next special presentation will be Fire Chief Preston Moore presenting awards to Ron Castro and Sean Stocker. Would you please come forward?
I'm going to bring this down so I can see.
Please.
President Potter, members of council, Mayor Maggie, Safety Director Gray, thank you for the opportunity to recognize two of our personnel as we present them of the Distinguished Service Cross. As you know, the Whitehall Division of Fire is a home tradition of having high-performing firefighters who are essential at providing fire protection and emergency medical services. The men and women who take the oath do not do so for no variety or to have medals bestowed upon them, but awards are recognition not reason why they do this. As chief of the department and on behalf of the mayor and the safety director, it is crucial for us to recognize certain actions that go well above and beyond the normal call of duty. The two men I am about to present the awards to wholeheartedly embrace the core values of the Division of Fire in the city of Whitehall. The details of each award presented will give you a glimpse into the type of personnel we have protecting the citizens 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Tonight, we are awarding two of our firefighters the Distinguished Service Cross. This award is given to members who distinguish themselves by exemplary actions during the performance of their normally assigned job duties. The award nomination is reviewed by an internal committee of seven department representatives who select the recipient based off a high degree of scrutiny. Qualifying considerations for this award center on the act or acts performed by the member in a relative comparison to acts performed by other members of the division as part of their routine duties. The acts considered for this award should be completed in a manner that is judged to be above and beyond that which is normally required or expected, and should set them apart from those performing comparable tasks and duties. Assistant Chief Watts is the chairman of the awards committee. I'd like him to come up and lead the narrative of the awards.
Okay, Lieutenant Ron Castro. Lieutenant Castro has been a member of the Whitehall Division of Fire since August of 1997. Over those 25-plus years, Ron has routinely provided a high level of professionalism and unmatched service to the citizens of Whitehall. Ron's career has been highlighted as a very useful resource for both the fire department as well as the Whitehall Division of Police. He is a unique asset for the city as he continues to be involved with the police SWAT team as well as a frontline fire officer for the fire department. A year ago, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant and has taken on multiple projects and initiatives that have a positive impact on our ability to save lives and protect property. One of the ways the fire department engages with our community is through EMS. Responding to medical emergencies has been the hallmark of our fire department since the beginning. As lieutenant, Ron still functions as a frontline paramedic while providing supervision for our personnel both on and off emergency scenes. For some, it can be easy to disengage from their frontline duties while being overwhelmed by the necessity to supervise. Tonight, we are awarding Lieutenant Ron Castro the Distinguished Service Cross as a result of his actions on March 9th, 2022, at a Mount Carmel urgent care. Ron's experience, along with his compassion and empathy, set the stage for him to directly intervene in saving a life. One of Lieutenant Castro's coworkers who was with him that day submitted the nomination with a firsthand account of his actions. I'll read a few excerpts from that nomination to give context for this award. "Next one flagged too was at Mount Carmel urgent care for a non-emergency personnel matter. While waiting for the matter to be resolved, a lady came into the lobby asking for a blood pressure check. There was some confusion and problems with her insurance at the desk, and she was not going to be assessed or treated. Lieutenant Castro recognized the distress she was in and stepped in and asked if she needed assistance and offered to do so in the privacy of one of our medics. During this, Lieutenant Castro also noticed signs and symptoms of an impending stroke. Lieutenant Castro spoke to her in a calm but direct manner stating she needed to go to the emergency room. Lieutenant Castro and another firefighter transported her to Mount Carmel East where she received definitive care with lifesaving intervention. Without Lieutenant Castro recognizing the situation, exhibiting care and compassion, the outcome would have most definitely been trampled. Lieutenant Castro, please accept this Distinguished Service Cross as our gratitude for your actions on March 9th, 2022 for going above and beyond for a citizen by providing compassionate care and utilizing your knowledge, skills, and abilities to step in unprovoked and save your life." And firefighter Sean Stocker. Sean is a newer firefighter for the city of Whitehall, recently hired in January of this year. While he may be a rookie within the walls of our station, he is a seasoned veteran with a long history of amazing service to others. Sean came to Whitehall as a lateral hire from Plain Township New Albany Fire Department. Believe when I say we are extremely lucky he chose us. I think you will see why here shortly. He arrived here with almost 20 years of full-time experience and a wealth of skill and knowledge. He quickly established himself as a high performer with a hard goal. If you ask anyone in the fire department, they would describe Sean as a guy that would give you the shirt off his back. Tonight, we are awarding Sean the Distinguished Service Cross as a result of his commitment to serving personnel and assisting them with mental health issues. Firefighter suicide has become an epidemic in the fire service, and mental health resiliency is on the forefront of our minds. To make it clear, in 2020, there were 72 firefighter fatalities due to operating out of an emergency incident. There were 129 firefighter suicides that year. This topic has hit close to home here in central Ohio many times over recently. Sean is an active member of the Ohio Association Professional Firefighters Peer Support Team, a group of firefighters who travel the state responding to calls for help from our own. Recently, the Whitehall Division of Fire received a letter from a firefighter in central Ohio who Sean assisted. I will not read every word in this letter, however, I want to read a couple excerpts to detail the level of help Sean provided to this firefighter. Quote, "Even though I am not resident of Whitehall or within Whitehall's emergency response district, I feel inclined to acknowledge firefighter Stocker for award. I didn't know Sean until a few weeks ago when I discovered him through the OAPF peer support resource. Firefighter Stocker greatly helped me through a dark period in my life with battles of anxiety, depression, divorce, regret, and dwindling religious faith. Despite Sean's already demanding work and life commitments, he made the time on and off duty to help a fellow firefighter out. Firefighter Stocker is a great counselor for the firefighter community, or really anyone that needs help. People like Sean who may never really know how many lives they save in a lifetime. I believe Sean genuinely cares about people. He displays no difficulty or hesitation, prioritizing others' needs before his own, and I bore witness to that. Due to his distinct virtue of compassion and values of commitment and community, which all helped restore my life, I believe firefighter Stocker should be rewarded," end quote. For Sean, please accept this Distinguished Service Cross as our gratitude for your servant leadership, selfless acts of kindness, and your constant work to help others."
I want to thank you again for allowing us to talk to you. By all means, thank you. Welcome anytime. And our other special presentation will be Ryan Andrews, who is no stranger to these chambers, with EMHET on the OPWC State Capitol Improvement and our Local Transportation Improvement Programs, which is Resolution 26222.
All right, thank you, members of council, for having us here today. We're here to talk about grant application that we're assisting the city on for improvements to East Broad Street between Robinwood Avenue and Pine Wood Drive. I know that there's an exhibit that Julie's going to put up on the screen, and we'll talk about that here briefly. But just to kind of set the stage, this is Ohio Public Works Commission funding that we're seeking. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight for your consideration, allowing the city to move forward with that application. But this is the second phase of improvements to East Broad Street. So last year, we applied for East Broad Street Phase 1, and that project was received well by OPWC and funded, and we're currently in the process of working through detailed engineering plans for that improvement. That starts at the western edge of the city along East Broad Street and extends to Robinwood Avenue. This project is the second phase, which continues those improvements to the east, to Pine Wood Drive, just short of the rural road. And so we're breaking this up into pieces. The project, obviously, to do the entire length of East Broad Street, this is Whitehall's incredibly expensive project, and we're putting it into parts to make it a little bit easier to fund. OPWC is a great funding source for us, but there is a limit on the maximum that you can ask for in a given year, and so we're splitting the project up into multiple phases with the idea, again, of over the course of a couple years completely improving the roadway. And so some of the things that we're going to tackle with the project, again, just to refresh your memory from the presentation we gave last year, very similar scope. We're not really adding lanes to the road, per se, but we are improving the pavement and improving the drainage, which is probably one of the biggest issues out there, is that a lot of the old storm inlets are starting to fail, or you're starting to see the pavement sort of sink in around them. And so that's one of the big things that we're going to correct. And then we're adding decorative street lighting, a multi-use path along the roadway to connect into other paths in the area and to kind of tie in some of the regional bike paths that exist in the area. And, you know, really, that's about it, fixing the pavement and the curbs. It's more of a maintenance project, really, than it is an expansion project. And, you know, the idea is to make the roadway safer and easier to travel, obviously, easier to travel at night, improve the drainage to make sure that the snow and ice and water after it rains gets off the road quicker, and those sorts of things. Just a little bit of background, Ohio Public Works Commission funding, it's gas tax money, and so this is an opportunity for the city of Whitehall to reclaim some of the gas tax that we all pay when we go to the pump. And we've been very successful with it over the years because we really do a good job of strategically picking projects that are going to score well. It's a highly competitive process, and the committee here in central Ohio that arranges the projects, you know, scrutinizes them pretty thoroughly. So, you know, part of it is public involvement, and that's part of the reason why we have this meeting. Obviously, we then take feedback from anybody, you know, in the group. We are passing around the sign-in sheet and comment forms. If you have an interest in expressing support or concerns or just even general comments about the project, we'd be happy to include them in the city's application. The project itself is somewhere around $3.5 to $4 million in cost. It's hard for us right now to estimate costs because things are escalating in the construction, in the construction industry, very rapidly. But, you know, we're doing the best we can, and we have a lot of similar projects that have gone out to bid recently, so we have a lot of good comparisons to sort of see what trends there are in the construction industry in terms of the cost. But with that, we will be requesting the full amount from OPWC. Typically, what we do is ask for 75% of it in grant and 25% of it in a 0% interest loan. So, you know, again, it's a pretty good deal, obviously, to obtain, you know, close to $3 million in grant, probably is what we're looking at, and probably less than $1 million in that 0% interest loan. Because like I said, the project's probably about $3.8 million in the latest cost estimates that was pulled together. Let me see if there's anything else, really, to add. I don't know, can you think of anything, partly, for a normal discussion?
Schedule.
Schedule, yeah, sure. The schedule for the project. So the application is due to the Ohio Public Works Commission on September 2nd, so we're going to be putting that together and getting it ready to submit here very shortly, in the next couple weeks. From there, the local committee that reviews these applications spends a couple months working through that and scoring the projects. Usually, right around Thanksgiving timeframe, they'll schedule a meeting with us. Usually, it'll probably be me and Zach, I would guess, to just sort of talk about the project and give their general impressions of it. We tend to get a pretty good idea of where things are going from there, but then in mid-December, they'll come out with their official notices as to whether or not we received funding. From there, the project funding becomes available at the beginning of the state's fiscal, next fiscal year, which is July 1st of 2023. And so at that point in time, we'll probably be getting started on engineering if we're successful and moving forward with actually putting the wheels in motion for the project. And it would be constructed then in 2024. Phase 1, which we're working on right now, is going to be constructed next summer. So I wonder if there are any questions?
So the overall time of construction, you say about a year?
Yeah, typically, I would say yes. You know, we'll get the project out to bid, for example, for the current project, we'll get it out to bid in probably January or February of '23. Really, you know, weather, construction can start until, you know, late March is usually when the contractors really start hitting the ground running. And from there, the far bulk of the project will be done probably before November, but there are still maybe a few lingering items that have to take place the following spring. For example, just with some of like the supply chain issues and everything else that's going on, street light poles are taking, you know, like 300 days to get them from the time you placed the order. So they might have the bases and everything set up for it, but they might not be able to put the poles up until the following spring. And then, of course, there's always a little bit of touch-up grass seed and all that sort of stuff that usually happens the following spring. But the far majority of this first phase will be done in 2023, and we would plan the same type of construction schedule for this phase as well, assuming we're funded and we move forward, but that it would be, you know, bulk of the project getting done in the summer of 2024.
So out of curiosity. Go ahead.
You said the road wouldn't be widened, but it would be, what's it going to be, a bike path or some?
Yeah, so we're planning on maintaining the same byeline section that exists out there now. The pavement does need to be reconstructed. It's in pretty bad shape, you know, all along. We drive pretty fast through there, so you don't, I always drive and I'm looking at the cracks as I drive this way.
Occupational hazard.
But I do it, so I notice it's in pretty bad shape. The curbs are in pretty poor condition, and really, the walking conditions for pedestrians are not the greatest.
That's nothing wrong, yeah.
And so the sidewalks are going to be replaced. One side of the road will have new sidewalk on it, and the other side of the road will have a multi-use path.
And that'll be asphalt?
That'll be paved.
And the sidewalks will be concrete?
Correct.
So for existing businesses that are along those sides, you're not going to go into their area, or are you? Are you going to?
That is a question that will have to be resolved through final engineering. Right now, you know, as we look at it, it appears as though there's room, but we're, you know, we're looking on an overhead photo. It's not exact measurements. And so when we get into engineering, we will do real survey. We'll know exactly where their property corners are. And there could be situations where the bike path might be over into a parking lot a little bit. And when those situations arise, typically, what we'll do is we'll put together some options on how to modify the parking lot and our project so that we can, you know, maybe we can compress or narrow the path down for a few feet, or maybe we can put a little landscape strip in the parking lot in front of the parking spaces to sort of separate the bike path from the parking lot. So those types of things, we usually work out in final engineering and try to make it look nice and try not to create too big of an impact on the businesses.
And then typically, don't you, when you're engineering that, look for, in this case, the north side, the south side of the street, you want it to be most open, you got the double space to accommodate that walking path?
Obviously, if one side of the street has all the power poles and the fire hydrants, we're probably going to choose the other side of the street for the path. But so, yeah, we'll definitely look at existing conditions and try to figure out which side's going to cause the less disruption.
Least impact.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how many vehicles, or pedestrians, or both, have traveled that area?
Do you have the number?
Maybe I should direct that to Mr. Williams.
I would say it's probably, it's probably over 20,000. I'm not sure if it hits 20,000 to 25,000, but my guess is it's.
I think we discussed this when we were talking about a business going in there at Yearling and Broad Street. So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have to put that number in our application, and so if we haven't looked it up yet, we need to, but it's, you know, it's in the 20,000 to 30,000 probably in terms of vehicles. Pedestrians, we don't have a count on that.
Well, that'd be hard with the apartments and the businesses coming from Robinwood up to Pine Wood, so, yeah.
There are always a lot of people out there.
There are, yeah. Thanks.
I think it's only going to increase.
Yeah, it's developing.
Develops.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions at council or the administration? I guess we'll make it easy on you, Ryan.
All right. Does anyone stand ovation?
Hey, Ryan, Ryan, that comes after you get it approved.
Would you like? Do you like these papers?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll post those up if possible.
They're good enough, if not, please send them to the city email.
Maybe next time we will.
Okay, this now brings us to our first poll public of the evening. I'd invite anyone to please come forward, and if you do, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Okay, seeing nobody. We'll go into our We'll go with our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week. However, I was unable to attend, so I was very curious to review the minutes. And I have to say, another very professional job done by Mrs. Og on those minutes. And I would also like to thank Chair, or Councilperson Smith for chairing Administration and Financial Management in my absence. We will meet again next Tuesday at, I think, six thirty-one, thirty.
I'll make a note of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we suspect that that will happen again next week.
Very good. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards Enforcement met last week. We have two ordinances for third reading this evening. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. I was not here. I was on vacation at, in Virginia Beach. But I did observe the meet, the meeting of the councilperson. Elmore, could you kind of visit it last week? I saw. So we have a couple of ordinances, forty-three and forty-four, on the business side. We'll meet again next weekend at six thirty.
Thank you very much. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services also met last week in my absence. Thank you very much. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week. I don't know, but when did you say? Mine's going to be about six forty.
Okay. Public Safety, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met, our minutes are on file. We have no legislation as pending. And I do want to congratulate all those for the special presentations. And I'll speak more of that in poll public. We will meet again next Tuesday at six thirty.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation we are voting on tonight. And we will meet again this coming Tuesday after six thirty.
Thank you. Officials and Reports, Mayor Bagger.
First of all, I'd like to thank Julie Og for her continued education in getting your clerk of, clerk of court certificate, no, clerk of counsel certificate. There's so many clerks. And I know, I, I see her studying. She does a fantastic job. She's immersed herself into leadership in the organization, and she is a leader. And to, to think that you're going to go through your master certification now is just amazing. This woman has blossomed. She's taken on so many things, and she's so professional. And I just want to say thank you, Julie. You mean a lot to me, and you mean a lot to the city. Also, I'd like to thank Sean Stoffer and Rod Casto for their service to the citizens of Whitehall, not just to the citizens of Whitehall, but wherever they are. They are such a great example of public service and caring and just having that servant leadership. And so I want to say congratulations. You both deserve it very, very much. And Ryan, thank you for doing the presentation. I know sometimes the stuff is as exciting as the other stuff, but, you know, it's, it's good to be reminded where our infrastructure dollars, dollars go, whether it's state or our dollars. It's going to be a mix because we're going to be paying some of it as well. So I, I appreciate you coming out. Thank you so much. And that's all I ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would ask for, excuse me, favorable consideration on third reading of forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. City Minister Woodruff is not with us this evening. City Attorney Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and thank you all for coming out this evening. I would just echo what the mayor said. Julie, you've been fantastic. I get to the opportunity and privilege to work with you in my capacity. But council, you all know you have a good one with Julie Og. And I just say, keep her around as long as she's willing. And if she asks for a raise, I'm, I'm on her team with respect to that. As it relates to the firefighters, firefighter Stoffer and Lieutenant Casto, just without mention, I know for a fact the department that Chief Moore runs over there is just phenomenal. And I know he wasn't recognized, but we all know that leadership has a lot to do with it. And myself and my house, having been a recipient of our firefighters having come to my house, we all know the cliche, you know, many times we forget what people say, but we always remember how they make you feel. And our firefighters department has made me, in those occasions that they've come to my house and dealt with my family, feel protected and feel safe. And for that, I know the level of service that those officers provided because I've seen them in action at my doorstep. So I want to congratulate them publicly. And then lastly, to you, Ryan, I mean, you're going to get the standing ovations, not only on the road as people are walking on them, but the bikes as they're traveling. So for that, I mean, you'll get your, you'll get your flowers at some future point. So yay to you. Now, the officials report from the city attorney's office, I just want to update council. I had a very, 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 very productive meeting with Chief Crispin today as it relates to municipal court and our mayor's court. As you know, at the last council meeting, I kind of intimated that at some future point, I may have to come to council with respect to a budget concern. I want everyone to know, and I, as I told Chief Crispin today, from the city attorney's office, we will prosecute any case that is brought before us. From my vantage point, it was, it was just a matter of staffing where those cases are filed. I had a conversation with the mayor. Chief Crispin had a conversation with her, and I think we have found a, a happy medium. So that you understand, just technically, so I'm not speaking without, I want to be as direct as possible. The, the chief's decision to file cases instead of, to file cases in the municipal court instead of mayor's court was purely on a public safety, for public safety concerns. And what he felt was in the best interest to protect the citizens of Whitehall. We still have a viable plan to do the exact same thing, but do it in a different way that has not been done historically in the city of Whitehall. So in the upcoming weeks and months, you should see the numbers go back to the way that they were in, in mayor's court. And we should come to some equilibrium so that you'll see a continuation of service while no degradation of, of public safety. So I just want to let council know. Also, just lastly, so you get an understanding of where we were headed, if we didn't fix this problem, to the tune that there are approximately three thousand to four, four thousand cases that are filed in the city of Whitehall per year. If those cases were to go predominantly to municipal court, that would cause my staff to go from at least needing from two part-time prosecutors to needing four full-time prosecutors because we would need to staff them in each floor down in municipal court, which could potentially increase my budget from about three hundred and thirty thousand to at least one point two million, if we're projecting, not to mention the loss of city income as it relates to cost and fines that we would not get anymore as a result of no more mayor's court. So the, so fixing this issue was a, was a grave concern, and I believe we're, we're going down the right path to get that done. So I just want to counsel to be aware of that.
Thank you. Good information. City Honorable Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I would like to echo the congratulations to Julie Og. She definitely has gone above and beyond for me several times, and I truly appreciate that. Also, would like to make sure everyone is aware that Treasurer Alexander was in a traffic accident last week. His car was pretty banged up. He was rear-ended and then pushed into another car. So he, his car was crunched on both ends, and he just got that car in the spring. So he hopefully will be back with us soon. I know he's back to doing bank deposits now, so I, I have texted with him, but I didn't get a chance to see him today. And beyond that, I would appreciate favorable consideration on ordinances fifty-one and fifty-two.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Gray.
I don't have an official report, but would like to echo sentiments of congratulations to Julie and then our two firefighters who showed examples of actually what our other firefighters also do. Not to say anything about those two because they're, they're special. But we have a lot of firefighters and, and Chief Moore and KJ have done a wonderful job of getting that thing going.
Thank you. Treasurer Alexander is not here, as Honorable Quinzel shared with us. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting, and that would include the mayor's report to council for July 2022, the honor's expense reports for April through July 2022, the honor's bank reports for April through July 2022, the honor's statement of cash position report for April through July 2022, and finally, the honor's review reports for April through July of 2022. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have four items. First one being the agenda for the August 4th, 2022 Whitehall Planning Commission meeting. And we have the minutes for the August 4th, 2022 Whitehall Planning Commission meeting, the agenda for the August 8th, 2022 BZBA meeting, and finally, the minutes for the July 11th, 2022 BZBA meeting. That then brings us to our public hearing for this evening, which is ordinance forty-two, 2022, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, amending the planned unit development PUD approved on November 2nd, 2021, the property located on East Broad Street, Hamilton Road, and Poth Road, parcel numbers listed in appendix A, property owned by the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency. So I will now open this public hearing for forty-two, 2020 at seven forty-one. And I would ask if there's any proponents who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance. If you're, if you're that proponent, have to you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, members of council, Mike Shannon, a thousand and walk the parkway law. I'm here on behalf of my client in our investment. This is remarkably similar to the planned unit development that you previously approved. The single difference was a slight adjustment to the site plan where we basically eliminated one building and then added a floor on another building. The net effect of that was a nominal increase of approximately seven units. The PUD code is so specific, it's a grandeur specifying the number of units, parking spaces and things of that nature that technically required an amendment. So I had the two previous hearings in the preliminary and finding of all the plans, both which received unanimous approval for planning and zoning commission. And for those reasons, respectfully, I request your approval again here this evening. I could go into more detail, but I think it's good to scale enough. But I'd be more than happy to address any specific questions if that helps. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Are there any opponents who would like to speak in opposition to ordinance forty-two, 2022? Seeing none. Ms. Og, have there been any additional proponents or opponents to ordinance forty-two, 2022 that make a proposal? Thank you. Well, if there are no further proponents or opponents, I will close this public hearing on ordinance forty-two, 2022 at seven forty-three. That now brings us to verification copies. And Ms. Og, if you please take role as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. We have four ordinances or pieces of legislation under third reading this evening. First is ordinance forty-one, 2022, amending ordinance forty, 2011 to update the tax exemptions available within the Main Street Development or Redevelopment District Community Reinvestment Area.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance number forty-one, 2022, and move for its adoption. Second?
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Coniston, to introduce ordinance forty-one, 2022, and for its adoption. There's very discussion. Ms. Og, please call role.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-one, 2022 has been adopted. Ordinance forty-two, 2022, amending the zoning map attached to chapter eleven twenty-two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, amending the planned unit development PUD approved on November 2nd, 2021, the property located on East Broad Street, Hamilton Road, and Poth Road, parcel numbers listed in appendix A, property owned by the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance number forty-two, 2022, and move for its adoption. Second?
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce ordinance forty, 2022, and to move for its adoption. There's very discussion. Ms. Og, please call role.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-two, 2022 has been adopted. Ordinance forty-three, 2022, approving community reinvestment area, real property tax exemption applications for Yearling Rick and Bacher Development Group, LLC, Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation, Yearling Green One, LLC, for their respective designees and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I want to introduce, I'd like to introduce ordinance forty-three, 2022, and move for its adoption, please.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Coniston, to introduce ordinance forty-three, 2022, and for its adoption. There's very discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Please.
I have something. The name of the company in this ordinance that has applied for tax exemption looking for council's approval shares the name of a donor to the city-led initiative brought forth earlier this year. Out of curiosity, earlier today, I had sent an email to city officials to get some answers, asking whether or not the companies I've inquired about were the same. I will start with Mr. Quinzel, whether the names on the ordinance and the Saver Whitehall Initiative financial report are the same company.
Without having the documents in front of me, I could not tell you for sure, but I would assume they are, yes.
Okay. And to the mayor, can you share any ideas?
I don't know.
She didn't have nothing to do with the campaign. I was the treasurer of the campaign.
I understand.
And if you're alluding to something that was shady or illegal.
Hold on, point of order, point of order as it relates to this, Mr. President, if I may?
Please.
If I may take privilege just in this situation because I do not know where this conversation is going. However, as the city attorney, I have to warn councilmember Dixon as it relates to any accusation that you intend to make, direct or indirect. Not only could they have civil implications to you individually, they also could have civil implications to the city collectively. So to the extent that you have direct evidence that relates to anything of a criminal matter or anything of an ethical matter that would be filed with any commission, my follow-up question to you would be, sir, have you filed a formal complaint with the Franklin County Prosecutor's Office or the Ohio Ethics Commission? Your answer should be either yes or no. Have you done that?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking for.
No, I'm asking you a direct question. Have you filed any formal complaint with the Franklin County Prosecutor's Office or with the Ohio Ethics Commission?
I have not.
Okay. Then at this phase, any inquiry, I am warning you as the city attorney who represents you as a city council member, as well as collectively this city council, that any questions that are casting any aspersion or any direct or indirect allegation of a criminal nature cease and desist at this moment so that we can have a discussion at some other time for your protection as well as for the protection of the city.
May I make a motion?
Motion being?
May I make a motion to postpone the, this legislation until we're able to have a conversation?
Well, Mr. President, there's already a motion as it relates.
Yeah, we've already got a motion on the table.
I have a motion on the table, Mr. President. I'm waiting for a vote.
It's already been moved and seconded. At this point, it's in discussion, and it needs to be called for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, is this the third reading?
Yes.
We've had this in front of us for six weeks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we hear what he wants to say?
Mr. Shannon?
I just wanted to address any questions as it related to the improper motion. Thank you.
No further discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 43, 2022 has been adopted. Ordinance 44, 2022, approving a community reinvestment area, real property tax exemption application for Baka Apartments LLC for its designated, and are authorizing the execution of a master community reinvestment area agreement for the provision of real property tax abatements within East Broad Street District Community Reinvestment Area in accordance with a development agreement and for the purpose of encouraging the creation of new jobs within the city and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 44, 2022, and move for the adoption, please.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Kanter, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce Ordinance 44, 2022, and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 44, 2022 has been adopted. Under second reading, we have one piece of legislation this evening, which will be read by title only, and that is Resolution 25, 2022, approving the recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax Exempt Review Council in the tax year of 2021. Under first reading, we have three items. Ordinance 51, 2022, requiring deposits of public monies and designating financial institutions as public depositories and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 51, 2022, and move with suspension of all rules.
Second?
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Elmore, to introduce Ordinance 51, 2022, after suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Would the President like to move to adopt?
Second?
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Would the President like to move to adopt?
Second?
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 52, 2022 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 26, 2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 26, 2022, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second?
There's been a motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Dixon, to introduce Resolution 26, 2022, after the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution, the rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second?
Motion to adopt by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Dixon, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 26, 2022 has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and again, the same rules will apply. You wish to come forward, please state your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Mike Shannon, 51667 in the road. I just wanted to make a comment about the Whitehall Police Department, the Department of Knowledge here. I just saw the video from Turkey Hill, and if you have not seen it, you have to watch it though. Chad Hunzinger put his life on the line, and it just, it's not the type of article that will get much play. I've got the video, but he stared into the face of a potentially very, very tragic situation with himself and more juvenile officers of that vehicle. And the courage, and I know that there are multiple objects involved, but I just recognized Chad in the video, the courage that he exhibited in a similar situation, I have no idea what I would have done rather than just run for cover. And I just wanted to acknowledge it publicly that our police is tired, or need better support. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Finally, I want to apologize to your city attorney. I think I spoke out of line, and I didn't want to give him the dirt. My response responded as an advocate for crime, and no harm intended. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we'll move to our community day board.
I would like to remind everyone that at noon every Tuesday and Thursday at the Whitehall Community Park YMCA, there are free nutritious meals for Whitehall residents 60-plus, and that advanced registration is required, just as a reminder.
Thank you.
The farmer's markets are still going on for a couple more weeks, on Tuesdays from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Pelly Green. This Saturday at the YMCA at 10 o'clock, there is a backyard bird for beginners event with some craft and activities.
We all...
Oh, one more.
Oh, go ahead. Sure, go ahead. You do have that shot, don't you?
No. School starts on Thursday. Oh, school starts on Thursday for all of our Whitehall City school students. The Career Center started on Monday, so you'll see a lot more kids walking in.
You two gotta work this out.
Sorry, I'll give you the last one.
Oh, no, you're good. You do great. All right. We also have on August the 24th, the Memorial for Terry McDowell. It's on a Wednesday this year, thank goodness. It's at the Police Department, 6:30, it's on the north side of the Police Department. And again, that's the Memorial for Terry McDowell, August the 24th at 6:30. I hope to see a lot of people out there.
Thank you, Wes.
Okay, I will now go to the poll council.
Oh, I said, why didn't you say that?
I'm giving it to you.
Can we go back?
No, I've gone.
Okay. Did I make a motion?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Aug. She has been nothing but a professional and a kind, thoughtful person to me, so I appreciate and congratulate her on your successes. To Lieutenant Castro and firefighter Stalfour, I can't imagine as just some regular guy on the street, a councilman, an actor, whatever it is, doing your jobs, but I commend them and find what they do and the work they do so admirable, and I'm quite certain they're well-deserving of their honor tonight. Well, Mr. Andrews is gone, but I was going to tell him that while his efforts were not life-saving, they were informational to me, and I appreciate it with EMH and team. I hope Shaquille Alexander is okay, and otherwise, thank you for viewing from home, thank you for those here in the council chambers for our joinings, and that'll be it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank everybody who takes the opportunity to heed the council meetings and to stay up for us what's happening in the City of Whitehall. Secondly, I'd like to, there's several people that I want to say something regarding their presentations that they've had. I will say for Julie, when we cease to continue learning, we do ourselves a disservice. You are lifelong learning, you are kind, you are helpful, you are service in action. I adore you. You are very helpful, and I believe you are the glue to this committee, to this council. Congratulations, it is a well-deserved honor, and you continue to keep doing your best because I know you'll make the masters. Thank you for the work that you do behind the scenes and the preparation for council and during council. I want to thank you for that because you are a very valuable player. I'd also like to congratulate Ron Castro and Sean Stalker and distinguished Service Cross. Oftentimes, you look at service, but it's a calling, and I just, I am thankful for the calling that they, they answered the call to service and they sacrifice every day to help people within Whitehall and also those that are not even within our city, but to just see somebody in distress and to go aside and to help them when our healthcare system won't help them speaks volumes to what they do from their heart. And so, to me, that is, that is service in action. Also, I'd like to wish our, wish our treasurer, Shaquille Alexander, get well soon. And I have one other thing that I want to, I'd also like to congratulate the Whitehall Police Department. On Monday, I saw them on TV, and it did my heart good. We have a great service public safety group, from fire to police, and to be recognized for the violent crime grant speaks volumes because many people don't get that grant. So, again, you do a wonderful job, thank you for being a part of the city and keeping us safe and caring so much to even reach out to those that are not a part of the city that are passing through. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coniston?
Thank you, President Potter. I don't have anything to add to any of that. I certainly echo all the sentiments that I've heard from everybody. Julie, I, as soon as you walked in the door the day of the interview, I couldn't have been happier because obviously, you know, you've always been so kind and so nice to everybody, and that's exactly who we want to exemplify, who we are as well. So thank you for watching, and see you next time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kanter?
Wow, so far, so good. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, everybody, for watching. We did, we did forget poll or community day, we had community day, what, is that Friday night?
Friday night.
Whitehall's first football game at home.
Yes.
Grandville?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so Whitehall has moved down a division, and that's their first home game, this is going to be Friday night.
Central Buckeye League.
Excuse me?
Central Buckeye.
CBL?
Yep.
Yes, they are in the Central Buckeye League, they will also have two buys during the season because we have two schools that no longer want to play us because they are D6 and we are D3. It is what it is, so I know, I was with Mr. Hewitt yesterday for an extended period of time, and we went over some different ways to go about it, so I like the schedule that they have, and it's, it's, it's good. He's doing a really good job up there, and this is just like spur of the moment thing, we're broke out, not many people know that. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and Mayor, I saw you nodding, you said the same as well, so I have that. Also, I want to say happy belated anniversary to Mr. and Mrs. Devens. Very much so, yeah. Good job, beautiful couple. I know how I feel about you guys, it's really nice. And also, as I was in Virginia Beach, I didn't make a phone call nor a text, so I'll say it here to my mayor, happy belated birthday.
Oh, you didn't have to.
I know, I know.
Really?
You know, when you turn 39, you're great, so you're, you're great.
Yeah, yeah, wait 39 for a long time.
I'm not even going there, man, I'm going to tell you right now. Julie, I'm going to tell you, I was like, Bob and I have been on this council for a few years, and we've been through a few clerks. You're awesome. You do a great job. I know if I call, and I do speak to you quite often, probably, if you don't have the answer, you're back with me really, really quick, and I greatly appreciate that because I know you have a lot of work to do, and sometimes you probably don't have enough time in the day to do it, but I greatly appreciate what you do for myself, for all of us, for the administration, you know, I'm good to Kelsey and Zach and everybody, so I wanted to say that. And also, congratulations to Sean and Ron. I've known Ron for a while, he's a really good man, and he does a good job, and I think might have been overlooked, but he's also on our SWAT team. So he, he has so many obligations and commitments, and I know firsthand how he, how he helped me one night when I was not feeling the best, and he was at my house, and I thank you so much, and I thank our Whitehall Fire about that. Shaq, congratulations, I'm glad you're safe, and I heard about this, actually, my son did while we were on vacation, and I haven't reached out to you, but I'm glad Mr. Quinzel brought that out, I thank you so much. I hope you have a speedy recovery. Yesterday, I got to attend with Joanna, Mr. Greg, the mayor, Mr. Quinzel, at the Whitehall Police Department, receiving a grant from our governor, and I wanted to thank the mayor and chief and our governor for giving this to us, it's much needed, I mean, it's very, very much needed. The mayor could tell you the exact figure like she did yesterday. Oh, and Mr. Potter was there too. I could never do that, but I'll, I'll save a $640,000, I'll round it off like you did as well. And finally, I did see, oh, Ryan, yeah, Ryan, I've known you a while, congratulations, Don Clackerty, real quick, EMH and team. Whitehall PD, Mr. Shannon, I saw that video earlier today when Chief Kelsey sent it to me, and the thing that I can't comprehend, it's like a parenting issue, these are juveniles, these are 12, 13, 14, some 11-year-olds, I also read where there was a car wreck where one kid was involved, a juvenile was involved in a death of somebody else last week and involved, and a death of somebody else last week and two weeks ago. And our police, it's just a revolving door, and something has to be done. It's, it's a horrible situation. You don't know what's going to happen if you walk up and see a group. What are they going to do? They got a stupid car, they're going to shoot you. Chad Hunziger today, I don't know where he got the courage to do what he did, because he could have been killed today. Very easily, he could have been killed, and I want to thank you so much. The juvenile system, through the state reps in the House, y'all need to get your stuff together. You need to get your stuff together concerning these juveniles. It's out of control, so, and that's all I have. I'll see you in a little bit, Elizabeth, Isabella. Love you. Thank you. Ms. Peck? Good luck.
I was gonna say, thank you, Mr. President. I think everything has been said, but I do have to say, congratulations to Julie. It was well deserved, and same with Ron and Sean. We thank you for your dedication and service to Whitehall, and thank you for everybody that came in today and was watching from home. That's all I have.
Okay, well done. Ms. Smith?
I think there's even less for me to say. I also want to congratulate you, Julie. I know if you're anything like me, you're not a person that likes attention, but it's very well deserved. You have been kind and quick and fantastic with me as a new member of council, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, I think everything's been said very ultimately, but I would be amiss if I had not... Oh, sorry. I was going to bullway past, but I apologize.
President? I lost my place. It happens to everybody, Mr. President. Thank you all for coming and watching online. Julie, we know from day one when you took the job that you were a blessing, and you've proven that, and so we all thank you, and I think we all have. I'd like to thank the city attorney for his comments tonight. Since you've taken that office, you've run it very proactively, and I appreciate that. You're out in front of a lot of issues, and some of those you described tonight, and with the savings, we really like that. You know, like, again, tonight, we've heard about the quality of services that are in our community, whether it be fire, EMS, police, their SWAT response, or city services. It comes up several times a year, and sometimes it hits the paper, and like Wes said today, it's on the internet. I got on News Feed, the video that we were sent from the police department, and so the quality of what we have in this community is, is out there, and it's appreciated, and I personally appreciate it, because, you know, when we all talk about personal experiences, I had an episode sitting on my porch, and with a half, within a half hour of the call being made, I'm in Mount Carmel West, receiving a drug that probably saved a lot of my faculties, although some of you might argue I'm missing quite a few. I went from not being able to speak to, within a few hours, to be able to form words and communicate. But the reason I'm telling you this is, as somebody mentioned, how, like, especially in the fire department and EMS, and those guys that respond with the squad, how all of them behave that way. The thing that, that made my heart the warmest is that while I'm going through this, I'm worried about my wife, because she's, she was a little basket case, and the two guys that were, that transported me stayed with her till I came back out into the area she was in, comforted her, and, I mean, it's, it's just, that's the way those guys are. I could go on with other instances in the neighborhood with neighbors that we've been a part of, that they've responded to, and we are blessed in this community to have our own fire department, the level of leadership in the fire department and the police station, and on the city service level. All of those guys in that service department, if you interact with them on the street, they're very professional, they're, they're aggressive in their, their duties and assignments, and they, we're, we're just blessed to have what we have in this community, and that's all I have.
Again, apologies for unintentionally pulling past you. So Julie, I am profoundly proud of you, the efforts and work you put into this. You clearly took the initiative on your own. It was unsolicited. You, again, as Ms. Elmore said, you are always wanting to educate yourself more and get to that next level, and I think that's highly commendable. You've been a great resource to me since I've been on council, and I've been over two and a half years. But, you know, the other thing, too, is it's not just the council you deal with, it's the administration you deal with, it's the public you deal with, as well as all the other different departments within the city, and that's a big responsibility to do it so, so well and so seamlessly.